Yes, I am.
So we will call to order the Monday, August 10th, 2015, regular meeting of the Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners. We get our meeting on this side. Thank you. Mr. Phil, would you leave us in place?
Would anyone rise for pledge? Pledge of allegiance, citizen alike, and the United States of America, in the great world of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
First, let's approve the consent agenda. We have just one item on there, which is the minutes from our July 27th meeting. Any additions to the consent agenda? Nothing? Motion to approve?
No.
All favor? Opposed? No opposed. The consent agenda is approved. A regular meeting agenda. There's one item of old business and a members update. Anything else to advance close session? Anything else to be added to that? Anybody? Motion to approve that? Your motion to approve some of?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Be opposed? No opposed. The consent agenda is approved. Bring us to citizen matters. We did have one citizen sign up, Casey Mann, Little Loop.
Good evening. My name is Casey Mann. I live at 1852 Little Loop here in Pittsburgh. I'm also a candidate for town board. And I just wanted to, I hope that everybody saw in this week's Chatham record that our East Chatham Blue Under 12 won the state finals. And so I would like to offer a resolution offering the East Chatham Blue Under 12 Little League Tar Heel team for their win. And do you mind, I'm going to read the resolution. Whereas, East Chatham Blue is a little Tar Heel league team based in Pittsburgh and Eastern Chatham County, and whereas the team travels and competes against other teams from around the state, and whereas East Chatham Blue capped off a 15-0 run, which is phenomenal, through the postseason with a 4-0 mark at the 2015 Little Tar Heel League State Championships played in Little Washington, North Carolina, and whereas the success of East Chatham Blue in its championship in 2015 brings honor and goodwill to Pittsburgh and Chatham County, now therefore, the Town of Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners does hereby resolve on Monday, August 10th, 2015, to honor the accomplishment of the team, its players, the organization, the coaches, and all of the family members, friends, and fans who supported the team and its drive to become state championships in 2015. I hope that it would be something you could consider today. Thank you.
So what's the will of the board? I think I should know this right now. Has it been read? Does somebody want to make a motion to approve this or do you want to bring it back to the next meeting and choose to review and consider it?
I think that would be my favorite.
That gets great accomplishment. Willing to honor them?
Absolutely. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes. Ms. Mann, would you do us the favor of emailing this to our clerk so that she can prepare a final copy for signature and conclusion of the record?
I would be absolutely happy to.
Fix a few things here on the administrative level. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That's, we only had one person sign up for citizen matters. It brings us to our one item of old business, the rezoning request with Chatham Park LLC rezoning 2014-4. And I believe this will be introduced by Mr. Walton, our manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Board of Commissioners. Pleased to be with you here again tonight. This item comes back to you following the public hearing that you held on June 22nd. This is the proposed rezoning and master plan for Chatham Park. As we had indicated in our memorandum that's in front of you tonight, this also, following the public hearing, went to the planning board for consideration. Background is that this is 100, I think we're all familiar with the project and the setting. It's very, almost identical to some, to the proposal before you previously. This is 103 parcels. It's approximately 7,100 acres of land. In the materials that you've got is a map that shows the, all of the parcels and the land use plan, and then the full application, which has the master plan that's required, was delivered to you prior to the public hearing. The, most of the property is owned by the development district now. There are just a few parcels that we have noted in here that are, carry some owners on the. As you know, one of the requirements of rezoning to a planned development district is the summing up of a master plan, and that's been, that was part of the application. The, there's also in your, in your package tonight, some background and a memorandum that you had previously received from the town attorney with some explanation and suggestions about why this was being, coming before you. Again, it has to do with the new language in the zoning ordinance that was, that you approved a few months ago, and so this is a request to rezone this property in accordance with that new language. The proposal and the master plan calls for a mix of residences, businesses, shopping, entertainment, parks, open space, and village centers. The, we believe that the proposal carries, carries with it, carries forward a number of themes that are in the town's comprehensive plan, and we discussed that in here about transportation, water sewer, regionalism, recreational open space, economic development, and housing. And then the plan also proposes a series of, a mix of uses that aligns with the, what the mixed use objectives are in the town's land use plan east of Pittsburgh. The summing up that came to you has the required elements for a master plan, the addressing infrastructure, parks, open space, and so on. This set of materials went to the planning board on June 22nd. The planning board took two actions that night. First was to adopt a statement of consistency that was adopted on a five to one vote by the planning board, finding, offering you their, their opinion that this proposal is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. And then their second action was to recommend that you approve the rezoning and master plan. That was not approved, that was recommended to you by, on a four to two vote. In terms of our staff recommendation, we find, after looking at all of this, looking at the comprehensive plan, we agree with the, with the opinion that was rendered by the planning board by consistency with the comprehensive plan, and we are also recommending to you that you approve the rezoning and master plan tonight. So we've got a lot of materials that are in the packet for you, and we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you. Any other comments from staff?
I would just like to point out in your agenda package, if yours is like mine, because the town is now trying to say paper, and you're using too precisely every page, what is before you tonight is an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to amend the Town of Pittsburgh zoning map, and also, which would approve the rezoning request, is consistent with four pages. That's in the middle of the agenda package materials that you've got. If you were inclined not to do that, there is a separate resolution denying the application for the amendment to the zoning ordinance, which is a separate page and hand document. One or the other of those documents should be reported.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Phil. Just for clarification, if the board should elect to pass the resolution to deny the land in question here, is still rezoned PDD, correct?
Yes.
It's already zoned PDD?
Yes, sir.
Let's say it that way.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's the only question I have. Questions, comments, discussion from the board?
Do we have a map that shows us the four parcels that are part of this zoning, in addition to the original, the zoning that's already PDD?
I'm not aware that there's any new property in this.
Okay. I thought that's what I heard described is if everything in here is already zoned PDD, then there should be no parcels zoned other than PDD.
I believe that was a carryover. There was, maybe some confusion, but that it was carryover from the last number two, and they should, all parcels went in, Chatham Park are now PDD.
So this is the same parcel assemblage as was previously rezoned?
Right. We had added a couple of parcels then, we have not added any parcel, or taken any parcels out in this act.
Okay.
As my understanding, this is the identical proposal that was approved by the town in December of 2014. The only change is that in the master plan, there is a provision for additional provisions, that the date for those to be accomplished is December of 2016, and not two years from now.
Right.
That is the only change.
So those are the only two changes. Well, I think we're going to have to update some of the information as well. There's a couple of items that are reflecting previous errors that were corrected, such as 250-foot buffer versus a 300-foot buffer on the map. That was corrected in the last PDD master plan, and it is reflected again on the stream buffers map. It labels it as 250. The text says 300. The map would need to be updated.
What are you looking at? I don't, I wasn't provided an updated map for this. Did you see something new in this last year?
Yeah. It's awesome.
We got this.
It's a three ring binder that's got a date of May 2015.
This is May 2015.
It has the gold cover.
Yeah.
The gold color.
Yeah.
That would have been distributed prior to the public hearing.
Right.
You want to see me look at that panel?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Phil, you're saying that the text says 300 feet, but the map says 250?
Yeah. And that was a, a map item previously noted and corrected. There's another map that calls out Section 1.1 with additional density, additional dwelling units, and that is also reflected on the land use summary table for Section 1.1. And these are clerical issues that were identified in December 2014 and corrected. So...
My apologies.
I think the intent is to have the corrected documents.
Yes, it is.
Basically, I'm trying to identify what it is that's different, and I understand that the only difference intended in this document is that the two-year period for the additional elements, not start over.
That's correct.
But it carry on, and the deadline for those is December 2016.
Yes, sir.
Well, I just have some comments, and what is, I'm in favor of Chatham Park and to the growth that's coming. It's going to bring up the jobs and prosperity to the community. As I've stated in the past, in my looking at the land use plan, the area along the Hall River, what Chatham Park has to do is greater density than what the land use plan states. So to me, it is not consistent with the land use plan. And also, I have concerns that it doesn't go far enough to protect our drinking water. So with those, other than that, I've approved every project that's come before us, but I still have those concerns that I've stated in the past, that we aren't going far enough to protect our natural resources. We aren't going far enough to protect our drinking water. So this is the problem that I have.
Any other comments from the board? All that I can add to that is that my previously stated objections, some of them similar to Commissioner Colley's, have not yet been, never been addressed, and I expect that they won't be. And I won't waste the board's time or the staff's time, rehashing those tonight, but I still have serious concerns about the completeness of the master plan, or lack thereof, and the issues that are already raised by Commissioner Colley. And with that, I'll remain silent.
I'll make a motion that we approve an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to amend the Town of Pittsburgh zoning map pursuant to the resolution before us, including Exhibit A and Exhibit B, with the corrections to the official document as previously noted.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Four to one. Our motion carries. So it is approved, and the master plan is approved, third time. It brings us to updates and reports from the board.
Thank you very much. I'll, a couple, couple things I'll try to go through briefly, and then there's another issue that requires a little bit of, a little bit of feedback from you. I received an interesting call today. There is a commercial that is being filmed, apparently a television commercial or visual commercial of some sort, that's being filmed around the traffic circle of our parking 63rd and Quarter of Seventh by UNC Health, and they were asking me advice on where to park, and they sent an insurance writer to me, and so I just thought I would pass that along and give you a heads up about that, but I think it's going to be used in some of the marketing materials for UNC Health, which is a recorded data that I've been involved in more than a year with, I want, of course, the last couple of weeks. But I would imagine it's in conjunction with some of their planned expansion here in town. So anyway, I don't know whether that's good or bad news, but it'll be around if you happen to see them. Hiring updates. I touched, updated you on earlier in the interim. We did begin with the customer service rep at East Bryant, who's working over at the 41 Fayetteville Street Office with planning, engineering, utilities, and parks, and she's providing very valuable and much needed staff support over there. I attended a meeting over there this morning, and I can, I can play it firsthand, you know, not having to answer the phone or get up, answer the door, deal with things. This meeting was going on, it was just, in and of itself, a pretty big step in the right direction, and I think she's really going to get us organized and increase our efficiencies over there. So we're very glad to have her, and you know, feel free to stop by and say hi to her. She comes to us from, from the Chatham County Administrator's Office, and before that, she was with La Crosse and Blue Hill for 15 years, so very experienced, and again, very glad to have. We also made an offer and received an acceptance from Engineering Tech, who is basically someone who would provide field work and assistance to Mr. Royal, an engineer, a town engineer, and basically provide a lot of the, in the field inspections, provide some support for plan review. She has Michelle, Michelle has, Michelle Meyer is her name, and she has quite a bit of experience as well with info and infiltration, sewer, sanitary sewer info and infiltration, which is an area that we're engaging in, and so I think she's going to be of help with that as well. And so, you know, we'll be able, again, in the same way that Denise provides us with a little bit of that lower level, I would say lower level, but it's very important work, but a lot of the more detailed work, Michelle's going to be able to provide help, and we'll be able to get Fred working on some of the more, I don't want to say esoteric issues, but some of the more global issues, water and wastewater, planning both our current system and future collection, treatment, distribution. And then finally, with regard to HR, we are scheduling, or have actually scheduled a few of the interviews for planning director on, you know, July 1st and 22nd. Off the top of my head is when we're looking, it's on Thursday and Friday, and I'll be assisted by Mr. Messick, Diane Reed for D E C, and our current planning director, Mr. Walton, and we've identified, I've identified five pretty good candidates for this. And we look forward to having some productive conversations with those folks. Street sweeping. One of the things we had budgeted, switch gears a little bit, one of the things we had budgeted for this current year is some money coming out of Powellville to clean up, clean up our, I say clean up our streets, I know that can mean many things to many people, but this, in this case, literally cleaning up the dirt in the curb and gutter areas where we have curbs and dures. And I think the emphasis at this point in time initially has to start in some of our downtown, near downtown area, and the first go-around for that was completed about two weeks ago, and we're evaluating and seeing if, time-wise, material-wise, and also too load-wise, how much we're really taking up and how much dirt essentially that we're really taking up, and from that, we'll be able to make determination how much we'll be able to spread out in other parts of the city. Now, keep in mind that the most bank for the buck is delivered in areas where we have a lot of, let's say, piling, when stormwater brings dirt and kind of collects it in certain areas, potted areas. We're trying to, I think, maybe focus our ear, focus our attention on some of those spots, and so since this is a relatively good process, with the exception of maybe right around the time of the sidewalk and street fair, I think, I think that first go-around, at least initially, Mr. O'Keefe saw the, saw the results, and he came into me the next day and was upset that people were blowing their grass out into the street. And so that's just something I had never heard before in town here. That would have been land-based in other towns, but here, you know, we haven't really tackled that quite yet, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what we can do on that front. So, again, not only will this help, help visually, because I, I think, I think it will definitely brighten up, and I know we've had some issues and had some conversations with how dirt and house material collects, stormwater-wise, in our downtown area, I think we're definitely going to see some improvements there, but as Fred would tell you, as we spread this out, there is some, there is some benefit that we can get in terms of nutrient loads that we would be depositing in the storm, or we would be, we would be benefiting the nutrient loads that we would otherwise be depositing in the stormwater system, if you follow me. So the more dirt, the more crud, scientific term, that we take up out of the curves, the better it is for our water supply. And so I think there's an advantage that we gain there as well. So I will, I'll let you know and keep posted on how that's going, and certainly if you have any feedback on that, please let us know. Getting a little closer with this room. I had a meeting just this week on another budgeted item that we had with regard to this, this projector right here, which I think has served us well for a few years. I had a meeting with, with the gentleman, and he gave, gave me some ideas on placing above a flat panel screen on this wall right here, and this corner wall just above where Chief is sitting, to get some visual, to get some screen coverage heading that way for some of the folks in the back, as well as, as well as for Commissioner Turner, Steve over here. And that's going to take, going to be a couple of minor modifications that we'll do. I noticed that over the last couple of years, I've asked if, if my predecessor can maybe shed any light on this too, those wall outlets, I don't believe are actually powered up, and so we're going to have to probably get those taken care of. And then, I don't know if you remember, I don't know if you remember when we, this is something that's bothered me, maybe it's bothered many other people, but, and nowadays it looks like we might have fixed that. So, sometime today, we talked to an electrician, and he might have fixed that. So there was a fire, there was an emergency light, and that light here, to recall, is always on, and so when we tried to dim the lights, you could see the screen better. That light was always shining on the screen, so we fixed that. So, anyway, there's that, and I believe the conversation that I had with, say, the tech consultant that I got, but we can get to our budgeted figure of right around $3,000, but I'm waiting for the final word on that. So, the other idea that I had, and I'll just, I'll just mention this really quick, I don't, I don't like the idea, but maybe you guys do, and if you do, then I'll like the idea. But the, something that I've seen other communities do, I've never personally done it, is put monitors, smaller monitors in front of your stations up above, either, either all six or, let's say, split it up to three, so that you have a monitor directly in front of you, and I guess the only advantage of that is you would obviously have a pretty unobstructed view to it. The, it still doesn't, I think, it still doesn't take care of the problem, I think, that we have, when we have a lot of people in the room, and being able for, having some of these people get the ability to see the screen is a little bit compromised, and then too, some people are kind of funny about, you know, the impression, the optics of you guys looking at the screen directly in front of you all the time too. So if that's something you guys might consider down the line, it's pretty cost-effective way back. Anyway, this is the, this is the version that, at least initially, that I'm, that I'm moving forward with, unless I get a completely off-the-wall quote on. Page burn at Memorial Park. We are continuing to move forward on that. As I, as I sit here and talk to you, I don't have dates for when some of the other file items, such as the benches, fencing are going to be put in, we're waiting on when those are going to be installed. So hard surface, I believe, is in. The landscaping will be waiting until the center cools down a little bit, probably look to get a September install for landscaping. And I believe Mr. Horn informs me that they were passing away at November 10, the event for that. So, he's, he's helping to organize that, and I believe he's worked with the estate on that as well. Now, he has met with Mr. Brooks, a plaque memorializing the donors to it, as you're aware, there was much needed and local contribution to give some of the hope on that. We're very appreciative, and we, in the last meeting, passed a resolution. We will have something physical honoring them on that, and I think that he's moved forward on, on coming up with that physical piece, and we should be able to have all of this wrapped up by the time we have a downtown event. The East Street Sidewalk project is underway. Contract-wise, there's, there's a drop dead date of August 28th, and they're probably going to be crossing to get that completed. If not, there's some contractual methods to deal with it, that frankly, I don't, I'm thinking that we're going to have to get to that part, because once, once the hard part of the sidewalk work is essentially done, and I have heard in problems that, that could come up, but when I say the hard part is done, the staking and balancing and things like that, it's basically finished, and they're forming up parts of it, and once it's formed up, usually you're in pretty good shape, so it should go by fairly quickly. Again, we're looking, we've got a dead date for that, and really looking forward to getting that completed as well. up, but when I say the hard part is done, the staking and balancing and things like that, it's basically finished, and they're forming up parts of it. And once it's formed up, usually you're in pretty good shape, so it should go by fairly quickly. Again, we're looking, obviously, we've got a dead date for that, and really looking forward to getting that completed as well. The other thing that I want to talk to you a little bit about that would require a little bit of feedback would be relating back to a presentation that we had had at the last meeting, actually, you guys had had at the last meeting, I must hear, one of which was the elevated water storage tank. And I believe there was some discussion about wastewater treatment capacity as well. And in talking to Fred, I thought that maybe it would be appropriate, as we come up on the time that we would be expecting the Lupa Company to deliver the wastewater treatment plant professional engineering or PER that they're going to be delivering to us, it would probably be advisable for us to have a workshop to go over the wastewater, let's say, the wastewater treatment issue from a global perspective, but I think really dealing with, you know, the nuts and bolts of the PER, because I think that PER is going to get at a lot of the questions and a lot of the issues that we have as far as capacity, future capacity. One of, I think, the big pieces that the Lupa Company has worked on in conjunction, in conjunction with, with Tim Sullivan from Chana Parks team, is being able to project forward the wastewater needs in terms of what the town would require, but also factoring in Chana Parks development. And also too, being able to work in not only the three, more or less onsite alternatives that we have here in town, but also the fourth alternative, which is to, which is to extend our wastewater treatment discharge down south of Santa Ana. And so, basically, all of those are laid out in a very graphical form, and I think it's going to be, it's going to be a really interesting, a really interesting discussion. But I think that that discussion is best had, not only in terms of wastewater, but also water issue, a lot of which involves this elevated water tank issue, which is not necessarily a treatment issue, mine, it's a distribution issue. But I think all of those should be probably discussed, and best discussed in a workshop format, as opposed to try and squeeze it into 20, 25 minutes on a Monday night, when it's really kind of difficult to wrap our heads in. So, I'd really like to propose tackling that sometime in mid-September, either the, either I believe it's the 11th or 12th, Friday. The 12th is a Saturday, and the 19th is a Saturday, in mid-September, and I don't, I don't know, the Labor Day weekend is before that, and then you get into the 26th after that. And I know from the past with Commissioner, with Commissioner Hawley, thanks, the, I know this is kind of lengthy, so I appreciate that. At the same time, and then if you do want to try tackling this on a weekday night, on a dedicated weekday night, we could probably get some of those issues in, but I think we've made a lot of progress in the past, really kind of getting up to speed on these things on a Saturday. And so, that's why I always throw that out. Any thoughts?
So, help me understand, would we have an advanced copy of the consultant's report before that meeting to kind of digest it?
Yeah, we're actually, we were actually anticipating doing a review, a formal review of the PER, maybe on the 24th.
Okay.
So, you could have, having said that, like I said, if this, if, I mean, we could certainly have, have us, you know, sort of a sit-down presentation of it, but if you really wanted to make hay on it, I think you'd probably want to have that in the deck in front of you. Yeah, to answer your question, yeah, we could have that, those materials provided to you well in advance of that workshop.
Okay, that, yeah, that makes more sense to me than...
On both fronts, I mean, on both fronts, I think we could provide a significant amount of information.
So, we go into the workshop fully informed, okay?
You're not falling asleep, are you? Yeah.
And you're suggesting picking a date in September to do the workshop?
And the other reason, the other reason, Mr. Mayor, that I kept bringing this up too, is that, is that you recall last year, and I think you had suggested doing sort of a mid-year retreat, last year, we did a mid-year retreat, checked in, checked back in, some of these things. I think you could use that as an opportunity, did my spend, say, six hours talking about this stuff, if you wanted to leave in a couple of other issues, I'm being certain of that at that point as well, it's always been a good time, I think, a good mid-year point to do that, especially as we've kind of, believe it or not, you know, come, come first of the year, we're already starting to think about budgeting.
Basically, Commissioner Stolberg didn't meet on Saturday, so we need to, what day could you do, in the, should you get that day, Monday?
I throw that out, I threw the Saturday out there, I, you know, if you want to, if you want to do a weekday night, I've got a place for that as well.
Are you talking three hours, four hours?
Well, that's just it, it's the weekday, doesn't quite allow us as much time, I think. So, you know, if we did something, say, if you guys could, if anybody could be here early to 6:00 or 6:30, you know, we could go to, I don't know, you know, 9:30 or 10:00 is very late, you know, we might be able to do that, even on, I mean, if you wanted to pick, you know, consecutive weeks or something like that, if you wanted to break this up into two, it's, it's your time, and I don't want to speak for it, but at the same time, we do have some issues that we need to cover, and it's getting difficult to do that with some of these things on a regular, coordinated night.
What about Monday, Monday day, maybe 9:00 o'clock until, until 12:00 or 2:00?
Folks that are working would have to take off the...
Yeah, I would have to take off.
You'd have to take off.
So, what's that plan issue, what are the dates for you?
Monday and Thursday.
I would recommend Thursday, Mondays always get some special character.
Unless we want to give up our Monday Labor Day holiday, because people are traveling, because Monday, those people aren't working.
Get back from what I'm doing on Monday, in case you venture.
I wouldn't recommend we do that.
We get a holiday pay for that. Yeah, we're thinking of talking about that. I think two times, that's still...
Yeah, right.
Are you thinking the 24th, Thursday, the 24th?
Yeah, it's really, I mean, you guys really need to be talking amongst yourselves on this right at the moment, but if you're talking, you know, if you're talking about an evening meeting, we don't, we don't have, we don't have an evening appointment.
That would be the evening of the candidate's forum?
Yeah.
I don't have that.
17th. I'm likely to be out of term by 17:00.
Personally myself, I'd rather stick with you work something in if it had to do a couple nights. Because I feel like if you, you spend a holiday Saturday, you get into four or five hours, you kind of lose your train of thought, it just drags the day off. And I think we get more done in three or four hours if it's a couple nights.
If you can, yeah, if during the day, so we do that.
Can you start it a little earlier on the Thursday?
6:00, 7:00.
Did anybody get here at 4:00?
Yeah, we found it. What is the date?
Sure.
Do we have the 24th? Do we have that? Do we have that call? Is it too early?
Got two votes for the 10th, Dara, I can do the 10th.
4:00 P.M. Give you enough time to find, you know, that's...
I believe so, yeah. We were kind of, we were kind of betting what was going to end up that, that day of the 12th, right around that period, I think we can pull in. So, September 10th, at, you want an afternoon, 4:00?
4:30.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Could you send the email up?
Yes, thanks. Okay, and then the other thing, the only other thing that I, I started, I have any questions on that, then so on, September 10th, 4:00 P.M., and I'll put out an email on that, and try to flesh out a preliminary agenda, if anybody else has any additions, contractions, relations, you know, we're certainly flexible, the things that I definitely want to cover would be those, that water and wastewater issue, really try and go away as much of that out as possible. And then, sticking on water and wastewater for the moment, particularly wastewater, at this time in our collection system, you'll recall that this is one of the things that showed up on the Dropbox, no, this is why I had to slide over there, because now I had that in that section, but you'll recall that, you recall that the drop, you recall that you were working on an inflow infiltration, I and I process to reduce the amount of inflow from, of stormwater into our sanitary sewer collection systems, in other words, rainwater getting into our sewer, our sewer pipeline pipes. And so, we received from Gator preliminary approval for revolving fund money to do a fine fix. And we recently, I believe at the end of, at the end of July, released a RFP request for proposals for some design, initially some design work, to find the biggest problems around town, where is it, how is it occurring, and then also how best, based on where it's occurring, how best to fix it. And so, we received two proposals, and I think that, and I don't, I won't, I won't release much more, other than to say that with those two proposals, I believe we'll be able to work with both of the firms that were selected, but that hasn't been, as I can, as I sit here and talk to you, that hasn't been actually formalized or ready to be formalized yet, but as preliminary measure, you should be able to work with those two firms to use one firm to actually use their equipment to go out and, you know, and search the system, and then use the second firm to actually assemble the data and begin some preliminary design work, and I believe we're waiting on some numbers for that, so. So, that is, that is moving forward, and I believe we did just get approval in the last day or so to go ahead and extend the deadline that we had to, to formalize those agreements. Gator provided us with an extension to that, so we'll have Gordon report to you on that. And I apologize for not being at last meeting, and I think that's the first one I missed, and if there's a way to go back here, I got a little bit of that. Also apologize for talking too much, but it seems like it's kind of a while. So, with that, I will head out and open up any questions, concerns that you guys have a few hours or whatever.
A question about the Page Burner part, would there be, that, after you talk about Page Burner, is there going to be, will she contribute to the community? Is that going to be a part?
Yeah, I'll talk, I'll talk to Paul about how exactly we're going to go about that. So, being a memorial, you know, I certainly don't, I don't think we're going to stand up for the statuary, or, I think there has been some visual, but we're going to develop an extension type of it, and I, so here, I can't tell you exactly what that is, other than he has been working on some of that, I just, if he was here, then he could be a better guy. But I will be back.
Paul, I can give you a little bit of an update. Paul is working with Jim, Paige's husband, and two sons to craft a message, and they want it simple, understated, so that's been accomplished, and Paul is going to mount it to one of the boulders, just about where the picnic table was, where she used to spend the time. So, that's going, yeah, so Jim's had a big hand in helping frame that.
Oh, Chief, I, let me, Chief, Steel Chief's considerable thunder, by the next meeting, we should have our police cars online and prowling our streets, keeping us all safe. Slow train coming, but I think the occupancy will be done by the...
Yeah, we just, state contracts came out late, and then there's been a few glitches along the way, but the, matter of fact, all but, but one should be completed by the end of this week, barring complications, and the river don't rise.
And then two other items, I apologize, these are the last two I mentioned, two other items, Steel Rogers Thunder now, the Davy Street, the Davy Street proposal, how's the proposal that was discussed by the planning board at the last meeting, I believe the applicant is going to be meeting with staff sometime in the 24th, deciding on what the next step is.
We'll be coming to you on the 24th.
And then also too, we should have wrapped up, we have a document that's about 98.9% done as far as the smaller areas, planning the rocks. And I think once we iron out a couple of those issues, we should be able to present that next week as well, so don't take risk agenda, prepare, do this one, a couple of raw a little bit more work, so make sure you get your meetings before next week.
Okay, just going back to the beginning, you were, it seemed like you were seeking some word guidance on the audiovisual improvements in the room, does Ford want to weigh in on that now, and manage the guidance you requested?
I was just going to agree with you that I don't think we need monitors, they would say pretty well, but I think that's issues for people sitting back in the room, who may, for the public.
I wonder if, could you put one on that wall, facing that way, to cover the audience? Thank you, I guess.
Go back against that wall, like there is...
The thing that, the thing that we want to do is use some, use some mounts that are, that are going to allow us to play with it a little bit, depending on how we're using the room and how it actually looks once it's up. So, the flat, the flat panel mount won't necessarily be a, I mean, it won't be flush against the wall, it'll be something that we can actually take out and kind of move a little bit, play with. The initial thought was to put one right there in the same way, using that sort of variable, and then this one over here, which, you know, we could, we could use, you know, depending on how we have the meeting room set up. So, yeah, the other, the earlier thought I had was to put one back there as well. So, yeah, I think the TVs, the prices on those panels now are short enough that I think we can accommodate an extra panel or two, if we think that we're not really covering a certain angle.
So, these are like flat screen TVs?
Yeah.
Will they talk wireless a little bit?
Yeah, well, this, this, actually, what we'll be doing is, is we'll be able to grow HDMI over to that, but, you know, like, like I use at home, I have Apple TV and Chromecast both in different rooms at home that will broadcast wireless, and that's, wireless is, is that's certainly an option, certainly an option if we want to issue a wireless. With this, he was proposing, with this big screen at minimum, and with this screen at minimum, he was proposing just routing HDMI.
You're really going to increase people, you're going to, did he...
Yeah, right. Well, then, what would we do after?
Okay, so I guess, I guess you got guidance that we don't, don't need them here, but...
I just wanted to throw that out there, that was a late thought that we had.
And I don't know that we want to micromanage the rest of what you do, it sounds like you got a pretty good plan there, and I'm comfortable with it.
Not worried about having too much, actually.
Yeah, yeah. And you're coming about the dead outlets, yeah, when we took that wall out, we felt that was just a wall, but it turned out there was a lot of electrical conduit in it, so there are dead outlets, you're on the roof, and the only way, you know, which ones is going to test, I'm not sure which ones are.
I know that these don't work.
Well, I'm trying to, I'm trying to power up her laptop, and I remember when our friend gave a presentation at the meeting, a meeting ago, and she was trying to plug in her computer over to that, that was...
Yeah, that was one of those unfortunate things where we made the decision to take out that wall without the knowledge that there was electricity in it, and the only way to do it was half, the demo was half done, and we put power through and just cut those lines off. So, yeah, there's some dead outlets, probably some on the floor and some on the walls. Okay, I think that gives me a hint, so, any other questions?
Any other questions, friends, okay? I thought you were much around here. Want to do our Commissioner Concerns and updates before the close session?
Okay. Do we have anything new for the E D C? We all, we all heard Diane Reed's decision announcement of her retirement, and we know that they're searching for a new E D C director. Next meeting isn't until, we've got one in a couple weeks. Anything from the R P O?
I'll be meeting at the R P O this Thursday noon at the Ag Center in Pittsburgh.
Fair brills?
And, yeah, the next meeting is this Wednesday at nine A M. at the Roadhouse. I'll be attending that as well.
Okay. Commissioner Concerns, Mr. Perry.
Now, I don't have anything at this time.
Two items, one is a pet peeve of mine, after construction is done typically, the contractor cleans up the silt fence and the erosion control devices, and always leaves the posts that hold up the silt fence, and it's dangerous, it's very dangerous. And right now, I notice that we have some of that occurring south of town in front of Horton Middle School, along the sidewalk, where the field was cleared, erosion control devices were put in, and no construction ever occurred. Silt fence is gone, those fence posts are a foot off of the sidewalk, so I'd like to see them removed. I know that the, we can't do anything about the contractor who did the work, or the developer who didn't clean up after themselves, but I think they're dangerous. The other item I have is Powell Place, was driving around in there a couple weekends ago, and most of the homes are built out in this particular section near, your neighborhood, and yet there's still a final lift of asphalt to be laid, and wondered what is the status of that and when will that occur?
They were, the last I had asked about that, just a couple weeks ago, they were still working through a checklist on some improvements that they needed to, they completed, there was the pond, I think, had to be cleaned out, there was some curb and sidewalk work that needed to be done, but we've some of that, all of it was completed recently.
Yeah, I can, I can, since I live out there, I can help you that, Barney all came out there, but it's almost six weeks ago, and they marked all the curb and gutter that they're going to cut out and replace, but we haven't seen them back since, and.
I thought they had.
I haven't seen any, any, other than the marking of it, I haven't seen anybody out there cutting out, replacing anything. And they, they came out and surveyed that stormwater detention fund, they lowered the water down, surveyed it, put a bunch of stakes with little blue flags on them, and that was again, that was almost two months ago, and so I don't know what their next step is, but there hasn't been much activity out there since the, that flurry about six, eight weeks ago.
I'll see where we're at with that.
Other area is the townhouses across the street from the park, both the roadway and the alley behind, lacking the final lift.
Yep, that's, that's not a problem, and I can tell you that there are, there are things that, off the top of my head, a couple of things that need to be, need to be fixed on that, there's, given some other areas that were finished, where there's been water reinstalls, where I'm personally not satisfied with some of the patch, and where it was , so, how will, I'll reconnoiter with Mr. Cortez, borrow the silt fence, and the decision to handle it. Thank you. Mr. Bennett, do you have something?
Hi, good morning, Oakley Bennett. I have a question about the nine eleven memorial. Is that a, is that a town-funded project, or is that a fire station?
Actually, I can address that, it's, it's being funded by the Chatham County nine eleven Memorial.
Yes, sir.
And we had some problems with some board members, and we have elected new board members, and the fire department and rescue is up there right now being involved in getting it, we want to finish it by September eleventh, that's our goal.
All right, thank you very much, sir. That's becoming a beautiful memorial, it really is. I was just wondering about getting it finished up.
We'll take volunteers on Saturdays.
Okay, I'll be glad to go on.
Yeah, well, we're getting off, go ahead, we, we, we let this cat out of the bag, so.
I just want to thank you for your support tonight, and just make an announcement official so the newspaper can get it, but there'll be an ad in the paper this week. We're going to have just a Chatham Park Public Information Gathering at the Chatham Mill on August the twentieth, from ten till two, and then from four to eight, allow anybody to come. Over the last two years since we did our first rezoning, we've had many consultants working many hours, and I think it's going to answer many of your questions about open space and protection of the water, water, sewer, paths, trails, parks, schools, we've already made a couple presentations to the school board. I think it'll answer a lot of questions, and we want to get everybody's input and questions, so we can bring in our elements and our small area plans sometime in the future, so we want to get that open. The voluntary meeting is not required for our rezoning condition, so anybody wants to come, it'll be in the paper advertised, I think we have an ad ready to go, and we appreciate your support, thank you.
Stay August twentieth from ten to two.
It's from ten to two, and four to eight, so anybody who can't make it during the day will be available tonight. It's going to be a big room with stations, you go around and visit the water and sewer station, or the park station, or the school station, and ask any questions, and we're asking for comments from the public to see what they would like to do. And then on September the fifteenth, we have another meeting of our Compass Committee, which has now grown to about thirty people, so we're having another meeting on that at the Roadhouse again, so thank you a lot.
Okay, back to Commissioner Bennett.
I just have, received several complaints about feeders in the neighborhood and through town, so that's really dangerous for our little children, people feeding through the neighborhood, and some are using them to cut trees off of them, and I think we need to do something about that.
Yeah, we just, Sergeant Swenges sent out a post with some of the locations he's received, some recently asked the guys to keep up patrol, and I'm actually just started researching, looking and getting some of the traffic common devices, like a trailer or something, to see if I can get a grant for that, or I may be able to finagle my budget around it, so I'm looking at other options there too, to enhance our community police program.
So, do we have, we still have access to that, one grid we share with some of your?
We are supposed to start getting access to it again, but it's getting kind of old and in disrepair, so at some point, that's why I'm, I don't mind helping out, keeping it up, but it may be more cost-effective for us to just look into the prices, like everything else with technology, price have come down, I've got some real reasonable models, so I may look into trying to either get one or budget for one next year, I'm already looking into it. I've actually received some just pricing from some of the manufacturers in the last week, because I was just curious.
I think we used to have access to one, but I remember there was a shared piece of.
It is, it's supposed to be, it was being used right now, it's supposed to actually be brought to me by the end of the month, so we can use it some, but it's got to have some repairs done to it, it's several years old, and as you know, those, those things, you know, the components start to go bad, because it is electronic equipment.
Would you just post, and when they get into the city limits, would you just post that, a large sign, let them know it's being certified?
Yeah, but it has several uses that, making the public aware, and also, after you've done, for lack of a better term, a public awareness campaign, then if you put your officers in that area, it kind of takes away the argument, I didn't know if you had it backed up for about a week, you know, you can kind of say, well, we've been trying to tell you.
Thank you. I don't have anything.
Okay.
I think I have one question, what's the latest on the, this first skate park? Have you heard anything from them?
The thing, the thing with, you know, I can't say that this is, the issue with this skate park, it's, you know, I've been around two other skate parks, and people, people just get older and they move away sometimes, and so, you know, sometimes you lose that leadership with the skaters, but I, I can ask if Mr. Ward has heard anything recently, but we've kind of always kept that at arm's length.
Yeah, they're fundraising, they're probably.
Okay, let's see here, any other Commissioner Concerns, I guess you can, kind of entertain a motion to go to closing.
Make a motion pursuant to N C G S one forty-three dash three teen eleven eighty-five to discuss the purchase of real estate.
All favor?
Aye.
Post, post moving to close session.
Ain't got to leave, pinch that.